All right, we will go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission, Tuesday, June 16, 2015. Item one on the, item two on the agenda, under Land Use Items for Discussion and Possible Action, A, Progress Stillwater LLC amended preliminary planned development, PZ-13-1768, requesting review and approval to amend a previously approved planned unit development for property addressed as 1400 North Boomer Road in the residential multifamily intermediate with planned unit development, RMI-PUD. Mr. Coots?
Tom Coots, Tom Coots Development Services. Just to, Ryan Yalv, the property that we have before us, this property back in 2013 was rezoned to the RMI-PUD district, which is residential multifamily intermediate planned unit development. So it was for a multifamily, basically student housing type development. I'm done with a PUD, which is kind of a site plan on top of the zoning. The property is surrounded to the north by the CG, General Commercial District, the east by the CG and CS, Commercial Shopping District, the south by the RTM, residential two-family multifamily, the west by the public district and the RSS, residential small lot, single family. On the west side of the property, you might remember, there is a creek going through there with an associated floodway and floodplain, which kind of divides the property between it and the residential neighborhood to the west. This is a more close-up of the floodplain, so what's on here, some important to notice is these little sections of the floodway and floodplain that's on the property. The property was formerly the Magnolia Point Apartment Complex that has since been demolished. The site prep work has begun. The applicant has submitted for a building permit for the project, and in review of the building permit, there's been some changes to the, to the plan, and so that prompted the need to come back through with, with those changes through the Planning Commission and then to the City Council. So the proposed modifications, there's a, going to be less bedrooms than before, so it's going to decrease by 80 bedrooms, but there's going to be more dwelling units, so that's going to cause the, so there's going to be more dwelling units. So what they're doing is, within the same space of the building, basically it'd be fewer, fewer, or more, I guess I should say, divisions, partitions within that building for, for people to live, and that is what's causing, when you do that, then you have more spaces allocated to bathrooms and kitchens and things like that, living rooms, and so that's kind of what's causing the number of bedrooms to actually decrease, even though the buildings aren't really changing in size. And when they, I guess I should say, when they increased the number of dwelling units, that caused the actual, the density of the project to increase, however, like I said, the actual number of people who would be living there will be less. So then, when the number of bedrooms decreased and the, with the way you figure the parking, that actually caused the parking requirements to decrease, and so the, the parking onsite also decreased by 66 spaces. Building height increased, the increased from 55 foot 8 inches to 59 feet 11 inches. Basically, there's a point on each of the main buildings, kind of at a corner, that's kind of like an architectural tower, so that area got taller. There's the building itself, the majority of the building itself didn't change, it's a, basically an architectural feature. The site plan, for, in general, the site plans are the same, we'll, we'll take a look at that here in a second, but one of the big differences is, when it went to City Council, there was a parking garage proposed, and parking garage had a level that essentially was at the same grade as the buildings, then there's going to be a level below, and that level below would have allowed a portion of it to serve as kind of the compensatory storage area for the floodplain that's along the creek there. And so this plan, when the parking requirements decreased, there was less of a need for the parking garage, so the parking garage went away and it was replaced with basically a sheer retaining wall at the, at that point instead. And in addition, there, the plan proposes additional retaining walls. Two locations in particular were of concern because one location in, along Moore Avenue, the retaining wall is in excess of four feet in height, and it goes into the front setback, and normally you can't have a, a wall or a fence more than four feet height within your front setback, and so it's about four and a half feet, and it's pretty close anyway. And then along Bennett Street, basically just right along Bennett Street, I'll point it out in the site plan, the retaining wall, I think at the highest point where it's, it's just one foot into the front setback, but it's in the front setback, and it's, it would be, I think, at the highest point, something like seven feet, and so I'll point those out on the site plan. This is kind of the old site plan, and then, notice the parking garage down here, really that's where the majority of the changes to the site plan occurred, was right in this area, and the new site plan, so I'll go, kind of, forgot, got to kind of see there were some changes there. So, right here, that's several, basically service parking right there, instead of the parking garage, wraps around with a retaining wall, that retaining wall goes along Bennett Avenue here, and that's the retaining wall that I'm talking about when, for the, that's in excess of the four feet in height, and then just a little, there's extra retaining wall along the back here, and then a little portion of it went into the setback of Moore Avenue, so that's the other location for retaining walls. But in general, as I said, the site plan remained pretty much the same, except for those few things. Then, to give you an idea of, this is the same picture from before, you know, there's the, the color rendering of the buildings, and this is the corner, and so basically imagine this four feet taller, that's what we're talking about for the increase in height.
So, Tom, I'm just sorry to interrupt, but on that, that's just the tower that's four, not the building or anything else?
Yes, yes, right.
Tom, what I heard you say was that the retaining wall in one place was as much as seven foot high, and is it seven or 17?
There are 17-foot tall retaining walls proposed in the development, but the one that, in particular, is a change from the old site plan, in that it's within the front setback, because there was no retaining walls within the front setbacks of the streets before, and we have a code section that says you can't have one more than four feet tall, so we're wrapping that up.
The engineer record in her letter says that they have one at 17.5 foot within the setback. I just want to clarify the record. She gets up here, she can clarify that record, I guess.
Yeah, probably would be good, yeah, that's not my understanding, okay.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to clarify the record.
Sure, sure, but there, there will be 17 and a half foot tall retaining walls in some locations along the back, very tall retaining walls, but I don't, so, that's a good catch, as far as that goes. Okay, so findings, the original preliminary PUD was approved in 2013. There is proposed to be a decrease in the number of bedrooms, so it'll be less than what was on the original plan, but the number of dwelling units will increase, and thus the unit density for the development will increase. The, the proposed plan is very substantial, substantially similar to the original plan, the few outline changes. FEMA floodplain and floodway hazard areas are located on the property. The final drainage study has been submitted, it's under review now, it's by no long, no, anywhere close to being accepted yet, so, but it has been submitted. Approval for the preliminary PUD will establish the new, PUD, okay, approval of this amended PUD site plan will establish the new PUD for the project, for your site plan. If this is denied, the, the applicant does still have the ability to proceed with development under the old site plan. So, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to, for the record, I do own property within a thousand feet of this project.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and at this time, we will ask for those that would like to speak in favor of this request to come forward. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners tonight. Tom did a really good job giving the background and of why we're here and all the changes. I'm going to just back up here to the site plan area. Really, the, the one thing that has triggered us coming back before you tonight is the, the density. As a technicality, the unit count actually went up, which is how Stillwater calculates density, even though the actual bedroom count went down, and so because of that, we're back here. And then, since we're back here, we decided to throw in the fact that we have four foot taller, retaining walls taller than four foot within the front setback, and so that's also added to that. So, those areas, this corner right here is the tall wall. I believe the actual tallest portion of that wall is at this corner, but it is probably 17, 16 foot tall right here, and that is right on the setback, pretty much the thickness of the blocks are straddling the line, so it's just right on the line, on both sides of Bennett, so on the north, where did my pointer go, on the north side, and then this just tapers to zero, and then on this side, the setback's actually up here, so by the time it gets in the setback, it's, yeah, just seven foot tall and then tapers to zero. Any other questions?
Any questions for Kelly?
I have maybe a clerk question, maybe a Tom question, too. So, if it's straddling the line, so maybe it's a foot or something like that, if it was moved all the way back into the setback, it would be completely fine, no problem at all, but because it's hanging over just a little bit, we got to get a variance on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and ask for staff's recommendations or alternatives, I guess.
Okay. Can I step, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendment to the preliminary PUD as presented. We can find that additional information and/or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, either continue the consideration to a certain date, or table the consideration until the information is available. We can find that the proposed amendments to the preliminary PUD are not appropriate modifications to the approved plan, and recommend that the City Council deny the amendment to the preliminary planned unit development.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I would make a motion that we accept staff's findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendment to a preliminary PUD as presented.
Second? There's been a motion, a second, let's vote. And that is approved with five votes yes. Next item on the agenda, Prime Land Properties LLC annexation, PZ-15-1948, requesting review and approval of zoning upon annexation of property addressed 1407 East Burris Road and located at the southwest corner of Burris and Jardo Road. Miss Evans?
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. The owner of the property has petitioned the city to annex approximately 108.77 acres on the southwest corner of Burris Road and Jardo. This map shows Burris Road right here and Jardo, and the black dash line is the current city limit line. We are not here tonight for you to recommend whether to annex the property or not, the only thing that you will be recommending is the zoning, proposed zoning on, on this annexation. The applicant has requested IG, Industrial General, and Industrial General is found to the west, all of this bluish gray area is Industrial General, that this area is Ag, of course, this is out the county on the other three sides. This is a list of permitted uses in the IG, I'm not going to name them all, just know that there's a lot of manufacturing, almost any manufacturing can go in here, construction, oil and gas industry services, parking lots, garages, public administration and service, research and development, telecommunications towers, transportation activities, utilities, warehousing and storage, and waste manning, management remediation services. And our findings include, the requested IG zoning district is compatible with the C3 plan, and the annexation with the IG classification fulfills an identified need of additional industrial general properties for growth. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you Patty. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we'll ask if anyone is in favor of this request, to please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. I see I'm Frank Lewis, 514 Greenbrier Circle, here in Stillwater, 74075, Dave. Our long-term needs for our community is for a much larger footprint, for the plants that we've had, that have come, and we've missed a couple, and we've got a couple in play, but we need a minimum, we need, we need plant sizes of 150 to 200 acres, and we just don't have any available. And so, a logical expansion with this is to find something that's already zoned IG and, and expand it, span it down. So, that's why we came to the, yeah, Planning Commission tonight for, to discuss this. Be glad to ask any questions for anyone, David.
Questions for Mr. Lewis? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Good evening, Willie Baker, 222 East 7th, across the street from here, Stillwater. Speaking, speaking on behalf of Judge David Winslow and Kathleen Winslow, his wife, who are the owners of property located south of this proposed rezoning, they're going to speak in a moment, but I did just want to say that, as you'll see in the report, this property is not within the existing, there's three existing zoning, excuse me, annexation phases that are identified in the city's annexation, annexation plan, so this would be outside of what is part of the existing plan. And the Winslos are going to speak to you, as I say, and they are, they do object to this, and do not feel that it's compatible with certainly their property, the property that you were, you were shown on the map earlier, that's a little bit, say, southwest, that's agriculture land and used for that purpose, but without stealing their thunder, I would like to let them speak to you about their reasons for objecting to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Please give us your name and address.
I'm Kathleen Darlo Winslow, I live in Tulsa, Oklahoma, at 2221 East 25th Street, but I grew up in Stillwater, and my family has deep roots here. We own the southeast quarter of Section 25, 20 north to east of the Indian Meridian, and it has been in the family for 122 years, as my grandfather, who was an immigrant from England, homesteaded there, he raised a family of six, and my father, Al Darlo, grew up there, went to Oklahoma State and became Dean of Agriculture and Vice President of OSU under Wilhelm. And we are speaking against the industrial development, because we have had problems with industry in the area before, and at this point, I will turn it over to my husband, because he took care of the problem that we had with the industry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gentlemen, I'm David Winslow. Kathy and I grew up here together, we were next-door neighbors, we went through grade school, junior high, high school, and A&amp;M OSU. Following that, then we moved to Tulsa, so I could attend law school in the evening division, working courthouse in the daytime. Subsequent to that, after practicing law, I became a judge for 27 years, I'm now retired, but I find myself before your bench. Thank you for being here this evening, so we can submit our thoughts. This is a stressful thing, because we are preparing to pass this on to the fourth generation, from the original man who settled it, William Darlo Selden, her grandfather. At the time he settled it, remember, this was just raw world, no electricity, no water, no utilities, no nothing. Al and one of his sisters, there were six siblings that were raised on this 160 homestead property, would ride a horse into the university every day to go to school. Al would graduate, and he would be teaching at the university or college by the age of 19, before he could even vote, riding back to the homestead every night. He then would work his way up to be the head of the agricultural school, dean of the university agricultural school, and vice president under Dr. Wilhelm. He would serve this university for three decades, attending universities and cattle shows around the world, Sydney and London, you name it, he was there. This place has been in agricultural use since it was started, since it was homesteaded, since the old man fell off his horse, that's what happened. When he passed away, the third generation inherited the property, that was my wife, Kathleen, and her sister Stella Jane Shapiro. Stella Jane and my wife entered into a negotiation, my wife now owns the full surface of the property, as well as 124, 1/60 of the mineral interest. Now, Kathy and I have learned a very difficult lesson. You and I can lose our property five different ways to complete strangers that we never knew, never saw it coming. One, I call it insult, that's trespassers shooting your quail, fishing your ponds. Many times I've been out there with men hiding behind the trees with their shotguns, shooting at our quail, saying, "Well, the owners let them use it." And I said, "Where are the owners? Get your yee off here." They would leave. Next is pollution. The Swan Rubber Hose Plant came in, and everybody was so happy about that development, until the cattle started dying on our western border, and also the school property, they were dying of lead poisoning. I call the city of Stillwater, they could care less, this was development. I call the state of Oklahoma, they could care less, this was development. So I went out there, and I took a bunch of soil samples, I took them to the university, and we found lethal lead levels in there. So now, we have a hearing here in this building, in your old council room, and the powers that be came together, and the Swan people took care of it, and they stopped emitting this horrible stuff into the heavens. I even have skulls at the house to this day that bear that lead in them. The next way you can lose it is easements. GRDA and the real electric power lines came in there. One of them came in there without any condemnation, any notice of any kind, with their CAT-19s, and they were cutting a power line in there when Al came in from England and found this. He stopped it, they worked it out, he sold it off at a pendants, and now it's a huge line, you see going across there, that was improved or enlarged here just recently. There are four pipelines at our door right now, demanding, demanding the right to cross that property, where they want to cross it. Or we might have some say so, in the number of feet that goes in the ground, but they're making demands. And that brings in the next way you and I can lose our property, it's called eminent domain. And so the threat of eminent domain is now being used by these pipelines. If we don't agree, the one industry statutes in this state, which are favored, allow eminent domain. So we are now probably in a situation where we cannot fight that off. Imminent domain favors the pipeline companies. Today is the new threat, it's called zoning. We've never had this. The applicants request an industrial zoning. Now, there are no utilities that I understand that are in place, they are available. There are no leases proffered to show immediate or even foreseeable use. There are no contracts for sale at this stage, this is all tentative planning in the future. We have not seen and had an opportunity to review any engineering department reports how this is going to be used. This is rolling land, there's a great big drainage system right through the whole part of it. There's no earnest money or consideration, the legal proof of a contract, that this is going to go into a higher use at this time. We submit this application is surrounded by ifs. If we can get this zone for industry, if we can get this annexed into the city limits, if we can find a buyer sometime in the future, then we can make amends. Oh, we're here to help the city of Stillwater have more industrial land. Don't forget- Don't forget that. A red herring. Winston Churchill said, "The ifs will come at you by the legion. Never let them confound you." Gentlemen of this Planning Commission, you are the gatekeepers for the development of this wonderful city of Stillwater. Development has to be very studied process, otherwise a community would be a threat to the welfare of its citizens. You and the city council are our only board to listen to our part of the story. We submit that there is sentimental value, there is family value, there is historical value, and this is a homestead. This is what started this whole place. This place would not be here without these valuable homesteads coming into place first. We believe that, as we now get ready to pass it to the fourth generation, our daughters, Jennifer and Laurie, that this is not an appropriate zoning use of this property. Indeed, we have some beautiful housing additions along Perkins Road. I've talked to several of those people. They knew nothing about this, because there was no notice requirement to go to that. On this property, there are two notices. There are two-by-three-foot cardboard or plastic signs. That's it. About two feet off the ground. So, people on Perkins, people on everywhere, they don't know about this. We got it, and all we got was a little map of the proposed change that I have blown up. Our property is right here. This is agricultural. This is Ed Shever. Ed Shever's here. He's agricultural. This is the piece of property that they want to zone. It is already acknowledged that this area in blue is already zoned. This is all agricultural, and that is, we ask you to please give us due consideration and to understand and appreciate the homestead value to us. We're in this town once or twice a month. Reunions. My wife serves on the library board at the university. We have all kinds of contacts here. Stillwater is still our home, and the farm is where we cut our Christmas trees, the sorry red cedar it is, but that's where we cut our Christmas trees, and it's been a tradition now for almost 45 years. We ask you to find that this is not an appropriate zoning use of this property, and thank you for listening. Anybody have any questions?
Questions for David?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
I'm Ed Shever, and I live at 1520 East Burris Road, which is directly north of the property that's wanting to be annexed. And my grandfather purchased this property in 1914. It has been in the family ever since. It's on the historical registry right now. And I have lived there most of my life. I was born on this property. I left for a brief time when my parents divorced, and I come back in about 1962 and took possession of the property and been farming it, and lived on it ever since. My family is born and raised there, too, my boys, my daughter. I'm concerned a lot about what's going to happen to the roads and everything else when this is taken into the city, if it is, because right now, from Perkins Road going east on Burris for a half a mile, it is in the city limits, and no one seems to take care of the road now, anyway. But when, if it is taken into the city, the other half that goes on east past my place, I assume that the city, half of the road goes with that property. Who's going to maintain this? Who's going to take care of it? And I do know that on Perkins Road, when you annexed the property there, you went straight on north, I think, to Yoast Road. City took it in from fence line to fence line, so they could control everybody else. Are you going to control me, too? I'm really not very familiar with the IG zoning, what can be put in there, but I'm really not for an IG. Residential, probably have no trouble. Rusty has got some housing areas on the corner on the, on Perkins Road, and it's a real nice area in there. I'd probably have no problem with that, but, but IG, I can't see where it's going to benefit me, only maybe hurt me in the long run. I already got a landfill on the north side of me, which hadn't helped my property any. And as far as I'm concerned, I'll probably live there until I'm gone. My kids will take it over. What they do with it then, that'll be their problem, but I'll be farming it from now So, I am against the IG industrial, and I'm sorry, I'm not a good speaker, so.
You're just fine. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, now we'll close the public hearing, and we will ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. The alternatives are to accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed zoning designation as presented, find that the zoning designation is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the map, the zoning, and find, or find that the additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date. Are there any other questions?
I have a quick question for Patty.
Yes.
If, say, it didn't get annexed in, didn't get anything, for some reason that all dropped, and someone wanted to come in and do something that would fit under the IG zoning, unincorporated Stillwater, outside the city limits, they have the full right to do that currently, and then could they still get city water, city electric, and all of that, just paying, because we do that on housing, I don't know if that would be similar on commercial-type property.
I believe they'd still have to sign the agreement to be annexed in.
But they would just sign an agreement?
If they wanted the water and sewer and everything.
Right, but it wouldn't change the zoning at all. It would automatically be the IG zoning. They would just get the right to service the...
Right.
I have a question. This somewhat is parallel to Trey's question. So, I know we're not talking about the annexation, but I have a question about that.
Okay.
If, if it's annexed, and I know we don't recommend annexation, that's just a city council decision, that the city council, let's say, decides to annex it, but they don't, they're not in favor of the IG zoning, do they just pick one? I mean, what, it has to be zoned something if it's in the corporate limits. So, how do they, is there a process for them determining what goes there if they don't feel that IG is appropriate? Or is it just based off of staff's recommendations of, well, we think, you know, the comprehensive plan shows this, and, but...
Usually, when property is annexed in, and there's not a zoning request, it comes in as ag.
Everything just comes in as ag?
Usually, unless there is a certain use on it for it to be zoned something else, but usually it's ag.
I guess what he's saying, I understand a little bit, that somebody could establish an industrial use now, which they would have to have utilities, and to do that, they would have to agree to be, sign an agreement with the city to agree to be annexed at some point, and by doing that, then they would be annexed in at whatever they were doing, which would be industrial.
And that would go back to if, if, say, we recommended the IG zoning, it goes on to Planning Commission. Planning Commission felt it was more accurate to be ag zoning, and they wanted to approve it, annex it as ag, does the, does the property owner at that time have the opportunity to withdraw his annexation?
Yes.
So, we're not locking him into zoning something ag that is not his intent?
Right. The applicant could withdraw the zoning request, or the annexation request.
Any questions for Patty?
What's going across in my mind is, I see a piece of property that has ag on the north, south, east, and majority of west side, and to me, it's, I hear the argument about we need more industrial land, but this is not the size. It needs to be larger, and the land immediately to the west, the majority is ag, and therefore, I've come to the conclusion in my mind that it's not an appropriate use for this property at this time.
Would you like to make a motion?
Trey may be disagreeing with my statement.
Actually, I don't. I'm typically, usually I'm not, but, no, I, I probably feel the same way, just because there is not IG directly budding up to it. I want for sure the applicant to be, to, just on the, the, IG. Can we pull the map back up on that?
Please remember, you can't speak unless you're at the podium also.
But to carry on my thought, the, my thought is, if we're, if we're right beside it, if we've got a portion right next to it, that they can establish an IG zoning currently...
This right here?
That is IG.
Yeah. IG is the top part.
And then below that is ag.
So, if we've got an IG that's budding up to it, right on the map, but we've got something that could be established IG and then be annexed in, we're kind of, it's cat the chicken before the egg, or however you look at it. If they could get it established, now granted, they may pay higher fees to get water, sewer, utilities, and everything there, but they could establish it now, the way it is, and then annex it, or we could just do it now. So, my thought would be the opposite, to do it IG now instead of wait. But I would like to reserve the opportunity, or given the opportunity, if it goes to council and it's not approved, that he could back out and not have to be stuck with the agricultural zoning, if that's the way they...
You know, I'm kind of leaning toward Mike on this one. It seems a little out of place to me at this point, personally. I know that, of course, I'm no expert on how much, you know, industrial land is currently available in Stillwater. It seems that, you know, I know that there's been some sold off to a few of the apartment complexes and student housing areas that have come in. So, again, don't know that there's a crucial need. If I knew what was coming in there, I could probably support it a little bit better, but the unknown is a little bit of a concern for me. So, that's my two cents.
I'll make a motion and see how things go. I find that zoning designation is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity. Do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. Okay, so with four votes yes and one vote no, the recommendation that goes forward is for not IG to be the zoning on that particular piece of land, if it is annexed. All right. Item C. L. and Carolyn A. Field, map amendment rezoning, PZ-15-1965, requesting review and approval of a map amendment to rezone property address 814 East 5th Avenue from existing RSS residential small lot, single-family, to RT, two-family residential district. Ms. Evans?
All right. This is a map amendment for 814 East 5th Avenue. This is, oh, you can barely see it, but I made the map, pulled it out, because I wanted you to see the zoning that is around this area. Here is the subject property. It is just one lot in this subdivision. This is 5th Avenue, so here is 6th Avenue, and this is Benjamin. There is our, the property is zoned RSS, small lot, single-family, and there is RSS on three sides, but there is CS or CG, commercial, on the south, and there is, a half a block away is RTM. This was zoned in 2014, I believe it was. There is somebody that's interested in putting in a multifamily there, and there are about two blocks to the east, there is RT in the area, and the request is to change from RSS to RT, two-family, or duplexes. The permitted uses in the RT is conventional, single-family, residential design manufactured homes, and two-families or duplexes. The findings include RT is compatible with the C3 plan, RT zoning district is in close proximity, and this could be considered a transitional or buffer to the single-family homes to the north. Are there any questions?
Any questions? All right. We will open up the public hearing and ask if there is anyone that would like to speak in favor of this request. I thought Mr. Coats was going to speak.
I think that's against the rules.
My name's Kenneth Field, and my wife inherited this property from her mother.
What's your address, Mr. Field? Your address, please?
123 East Lakers.
All right, thank you.
My wife inherited this property from her mother, and a couple of years ago, or a year ago, her brother living in North Carolina became a disabled veteran. Now, we're trying to get a feasible answer to housing for him, and the best way to do it is build a little 600-square-foot residence there beside this other house for his caretaker to live there also, so we can get him in a VA-approved housing. That's the purpose of this map change. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Hello, my name is Jack Day. I live at 814 East 5th. I'm a 100% disabled veteran from Vietnam, and kind of in a bad situation in an old home that I can't get around in with my electric chairs and everything, so the VA came up and talked to me and asked if we could consider building a living quarters off to the side of our property, and which I'm getting help from the VA, and that's about the only way I can do it. So, I really do hope we can get this rezoned, so I can have some help and have a caretaker live in the property where I'm living, so I can be taken care of the way I should be. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we will ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. Alternatives are to accept staff findings and recommend approval of the RT zoning, to recommend to the city council not to approve the RT zoning, or to continue or table the request. Any questions?
No, thanks.
I move to accept the findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. And that recommendation moves forward with five votes yes. Item D. Michael H. and Lisa... Michael H. and Lisa A. Stavas, map amendment rezoning, PZ dash one five dash one nine six seven, requesting review and approval of map amendment to rezone property addressed five ten and five ten and a half, East Virginia Avenue from existing RSS residential small lot, single family to CG Commercial General.
All right, this property is located on Virginia Avenue, that's Virginia. This is Perkins Road. This property is currently zoned RSS, small lot, single family, as is the property right next to it, but that is kind of a misnomer because this is City of Stillwater property and it is drainage, so it should be zoned like the blue down below it as public. So there's nothing that's going to be built on here at all. On the west side is the RTM, two-family and multifamily. To the north, across the creek, is CG Commercial General, public to the south, and then there is single family over here. It does have floodplain and floodway on the property. This dark blue is the floodplain, so it is along the north border. Of course, nothing can be built in the floodway. They can use the flood, or flood, yeah, floodway, can't use the floodplain. There is currently two houses on this property and the owner just decided that the houses were not worth fixing up and thought that the commercial would be a better fix for the property. These are some of the permitted uses, arts and entertainment, bed and breakfast, hotel motel, beverage services, churches, financial institutions, food services, healthcare, information, parking lots, personal and laundry services, personal storage, offices, recreation, retail trade, transportation activities, utilities, vehicle and equipment sales and services and wholesale trade. The findings include the CG zoning is consistent with the C-three plan. The property is an island of single-family zoning and could be put to better use with another zoning district. And the property contains floodplain and floodway and the portion of the property in the floodway will not be included in this rezoning. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
So they're going to still own the, back up, findings?
Findings.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So you're saying, it says the portion of the property in the floodway will not be included in this rezoning. So there's still going to be floodway that's going to be zoned RS?
It'll probably go to ag because that's what all of our floodway is being zoned, is ag.
How does it just go to ag? Don't, don't they have to request that? It's their property.
It would have to come through as a rezoning and just go.
Right.
Why couldn't we just rezone, I mean, if that's not part of the thing, why couldn't we just rezone it all?
Why can't you, yeah, and then they can't develop in the floodway anyway.
Okay.
There's a, there's a false sense of ability to develop when it is zoned something like commercial. The standard practice with the City of Stillwater is if there is floodway on the property, then it is not included in the rezoning application. Staff will be bringing before the planning commission later this summer, if not fall, a request to establish a floodway zone that will apply over all of the floodway areas within the City of Stillwater. So it hopefully will be resolved that way. But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, it's not just changed on the map. It would have to go through some sort of a process, but leaving it as it's currently zoned right now, the flood hazard regulations apply, no matter how it's zoned, because FEMA doesn't recognize zoning. They just recognize flood hazard areas and the different levels of it, could not develop in it anyway. But it does give a false sense of being able to have commercial property or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, so we will open up the public hearing and we'll ask if anyone is here that would like to speak in favor of this request. Okay. Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
All right. Number one, accept staff findings and recommend the approval of the map amendment or to recommend to the city council to not approve the map amendment or to continue or table. Any other questions?
I think we're good.
I move to accept findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. And that recommendation moves forward with five votes yes. Item three, under plans, policies, ordinances for discussion and possible action. A, City of Stillwater Land Development Code Amendment, PZ dash one five dash one nine seven two, requesting review and approval for a text amendment to chapter twenty-three Land Development Code by amending section twenty-three point one six zero, light industrial.
Tom Coots, Development Services. Let's start. Bringing you a text amendment involves three different areas. Two of the areas are as a direct result of requests from citizens and the public. And one of them is while we're in here in the light industrial district, I made a change, proposed a change for something that had come up fairly recently, and so we'll talk about all them. So the first thing is to add two new uses to the light industrial zoning district. Two uses would be, one would be personal and laundry services. Now those include things like a nail salon, stuff where you, businesses where you go and somebody provides a service to you. The, the request, specific request was to allow for a personal training type facility. And then the other request is for professional and administrative offices and services. Now that includes pretty much any type of office you can think of, real estate, office, government offices, things like that. But the specific request was to allow for a surveying office and that specifically seemed to, in the industrial district, a surveying office, you know, you have the front office and things like that, but then they also have big areas where they have to store things and there's commercial vehicles and things like that, so it's, that particular type of use is a bit different than, say, you know, a real estate office, a little bit, a little bit different than those, those, this type of thing can be, real estate offices need to be, you know, for example, need to be in a area where people, the public come to, whereas a surveying office just needs a place to be, kind of. And so I brought these, took a look at these and while individual uses within these use categories probably aren't the most appropriate uses in an industrial area, there seem to be a few types of businesses that they probably would want to locate in these types of areas. And so that's, can't really pick and, pick and choose out all these, so we had to bring the whole category, but it's to give people more options in the industrial, the light industrial districts. And then the other thing is to allow security fences within the front yard setback and just in the light industrial district. So what that is, in the code, it doesn't differentiate currently between the different zoning districts. It says if you have a fence within your front setback, which in the light industrial district is your first twenty-five feet of your property along the street, it says the maximum height of a fence is four feet. And so to have a, to screen in your yard or put in a gate and things like that for storage and things like that, it, either you're wasting a lot of your property and light industrial lots are generally smaller than, than the general industrial lots. And so that's what this is about. So staff findings include this text amendment will not cause a safety concern throughout the community and will encourage appropriate development opportunities and themes. Personal services and professional and administrative offices are needed use classifications in the IL zoning district. This text amendment will allow for complementary uses in the light industrial district and this text amendment will allow for proper securing of industrial properties. And so we haven't, anybody have any questions for me?
No, thanks. So this is a public hearing. We will open up the public hearing and ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this text amendment. Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this text amendment? Seeing none, we will ask for the alternatives.
Okay, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed text amendments as presented. We can accept the staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed text amendments with identified changes. We're going to find that the proposed text amendments are not needed and recommend that they not be approved by city council.
Thank you.
I'm not, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to add, you know, I think there, there are some opportunities in IL. We have quite a bit of undeveloped IL in town. And if this opens up some opportunities for some small businesses especially to be able to expand, I think it'd be good for us.
So I'll make the motion. We accept findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed text amendment as presented.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. That recommendation is approved with five votes yes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff for discussion and possible action, our next planning commission meeting.
This meeting.
Sorry?
Our minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, I, yeah, thanks, sorry. Let me back up. Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action. Approval of the regular meeting summary for May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. Those minutes are approved with five votes yes. Now we can say that the next planning commission meeting is July seventh, two thousand and fifteen. If there's nothing further, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's vote. And we are adjourned.